City Council Meeting, we would respectfully ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we're going to call on Councilmember Bob Ward for tonight's invocation.
Good, thank you Mayor. Let's pray. As we begin our proceedings tonight, we ask for a special blessing for our newly appointed City Manager, Bob Patterson, as he continues his service to the city in his new role of City Manager. We express our sincere gratitude to City Manager Craig Honeycutt for his dedication and many contributions to our community over the past three years, and we wish him the best in his future endeavors. We acknowledge and appreciate all of the city employees for their hard work and dedication and their service to the city. We pray that you give us, provide us with a direction as our city encounters the uncertainty of future challenges, and that we approach and embrace all opportunities presented to the city in such a manner that will serve the best interests of our citizens. In our deliberations tonight, we ask that our actions be guided by the highest standards of ethics, and that our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters that come before us. We pray for these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Our next item this evening is our proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, which is October 5th through 11th, 2025. At this time, I'd like to recognize Fire Chief Matt Lawrence. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I come along with staff, and we're here, as we do each year, about this time to recognize and celebrate National Fire Prevention Week, which is this week. And so, we are here tonight to, for proclamation of that, to share that information with our residents, to help us make Burlington as safe as possible. I'll share just a little bit. This year's national theme is "Charge Into Fire Safety," which is a focus on the proper selection, use, and disposal of lithium-ion batteries, which are very prevalent in our communities today, and do pose fire hazards that we are trying to educate our communities about. So, I bring up our Fire Life Safety Educator, David Sharp, who is mainly in charge of our outreach in public fire safety education, to share a little bit about that.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you, Chief. So, like the Chief was saying, this week is National Fire Prevention Week. I always like to start with my favorite Fire Chief, Benjamin Franklin, and how prevention is worth a pound of cure. It's better to be proactive before disaster strikes versus being reactive after an emergency happens. So, to me, it's very important for Fire Prevention Week that we be proactive in the community. And so, this month, we are slam full. We've got over thirty events. I even had a lady call today, said, "Is she allowed to get a fire truck?" I said, "We'll squeeze you in best we can." But, we are busy this month, which is great. I love being out in the community, helping out, educating the community. We've got several events throughout. We have preschools, daycares, schools, all the way to retirement communities and everything between. This weekend will be, this Saturday, at Lowe's. No, I'm sorry, we'll be at Holly Hill Mall for the Cruisin'. We'll be there at their Antique Firetruck Mall. Next weekend, we've got the Monster Mash Downtown. Come out and see us then. Saturday of next week, we also have several events going on. Morning Star Baptist Church, Lamb's Chapel, and we'll also be at Dark at the Ballpark as well on the 25th. So, that's kind of capping off the end of our month, is at Dark at the Ballpark. We'll be out handing out materials. We'll also be there for the fireworks. Thank you.
I'll just mention, this is the great work that our folks do throughout the year, but the month of October especially, is when we really double down on education to our community, to really focus on fire prevention during this time. So, thank you.
Yep, let's read the proclamation here. City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation in recognition of Fire Prevention Week, October 5th through 11th, 2025. Whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices and work equipment introduces unique fire risks. And whereas most of the electronics used in our homes and workplaces daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas, the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. And whereas individuals using lithium-ion battery devices should follow three key calls to action: buy-only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium-ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce risks in the home and in the community. And whereas the City of Burlington is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety, education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home," serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes, workplaces, and communities. Therefore, I, Jim Butler, Mayor of the City of Burlington, and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Burlington to safely use lithium-ion battery-powered devices to prevent fires and protect lives this seventh day of October, 2025. Thank you, gentlemen, for your work. (APPLAUSE). At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Mrs. Council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask you, there are conflicts concerning the agenda.
Thank you. Our next item is the approval of amendments, August 18th, 2025 work session, August 19th, 2025 City Council meeting, September 15th, 2025 work session, September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting, and September 22nd, 2025 special meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the approval of the amendments.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the request for additions to the agenda. Item E, Downtown Utilities Change Order 1 to Contract with Jimmy R. Lynch &amp; Sons, Incorporated. Item F, 2025 Street Resurfacing Contract Increase. Item G, Voluntary Noncontiguous Annexation Request, 2303 Pinecroft Drive. Item H, Resolution Scheduling a Public Hearing for Annexation of 2022 NC Highway 62. Item I, Resolution Scheduling a Public Hearing for Annexation of 2032 NC Highway 62. Item J, Resolution Scheduling a Public Hearing for the Annexation of Zero Shamrock Drive. And Item K, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting Schedule Amendments. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the request for additions to the consent agenda. Have a motion for approval in a second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item this evening is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda with the items? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Our next item this evening is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to appoint Darren Jenkins to the Burlington Fire Department Firefighter Relief Fund Board. Item B, to adopt a resolution and authorize the purchasing manager to process the disposal and sale of city-owned surplus property for one 2009 International 7400 rear loader and one 2016 Peterbilt 320 side loader by electronic public auction through GovDeals.com to the highest bidder pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-270. Item C, to adopt a resolution authorizing an increase in the micro purchase threshold consistent with federal and state laws. Item D, to approve budget amendment 2026-10 for Police Department to allocate donations received by the Melvin Hall Fund and First United Methodist Church of Elon to the youth diversion program. Item E, to approve the Downtown Utilities Change Order 1 to the Water and Sewer Contracts between the City of Burlington and Jimmy R. Lynch &amp; Sons, Incorporated, upon satisfaction of all legal and insurance requirements. Item F, to approve an increase to the 2025 Street Resurfacing Contract between the City of Burlington and APAC Atlantic Thompson Arthur by 50% upon satisfaction of all legal and insurance requirements. Item G, to defer the City Council's public hearing and consideration of the applicant's petition for annexation for 2303 Pinecroft Drive, Parcel ID 127295, to a future time pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160D202, and Burlington City Code, Section 4040, and the terms of the annexation agreement executed by the applicant and the city and filed in the Alamance County Register of Deeds. Item H, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for October 21st, 2025, for City Council to consider the voluntary noncontiguous annexation of 2022 NC Highway 62, Parcel ID 140575. Item I, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for October 21st, 2025, for City Council to consider the voluntary noncontiguous annexation of 2032 Highway 62, Parcel ID 140575. Item J, to adopt a resolution to set a public hearing for the date of October 21st, 2025, for City Council to consider the voluntary contiguous annexation of a 0.75 acre portion of a larger 28-acre tract, addressed as Zero Shamrock Drive, and identified as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 131297. And Item K, to adopt an amended 2025 City Council Regular Meeting Schedule with the following changes: reschedule November 3rd, 2025 work session to November 17th, 2025, and cancel November 4th, 2025 City Council meeting due to Election Day. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the foregoing consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Those items are approved. Thank you. Next this evening, we have several public hearings, I think, to be, actually, we have nine public hearings this evening. So, if anyone here in the room has a desire to speak during a public hearing, you will have your opportunity to do that during the public hearing for that particular item. Moving into public hearings, item one. A public hearing has been continued for City Council to consider a request to rezone property from Heavy Industrial HI and General Business GB to Plan Development PD. The property is located on the block bounded by East Webb Avenue, Johnston Street, East Davis Street, and Everett Street, addressed as Zero East Webb Avenue, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 136857. As a note, this is, this public hearing was continued from the September 16th, 2025 City Council meeting. At this time, we'll recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So, this is the first public hearing listed for tonight, but I think I will be brief and indicate that the applicant is in the audience. They have requested an additional one-year extension. That would be to the September, September 21st, 2026 council date.
Unless the decision would like to be heard, I'd like a motion to be continued as requested.
We have a motion for continuance. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Okay, that item is continued. Our next item this evening, number two. A public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider an amendment to an economic development agreement with Samet Corporation for the construction of public infrastructure pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. At this time, we'll recognize our Economic Development Director, Adam Scholl. Good evening, Adam.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Great to be with you this evening. Public hearing was requested for consideration and public input on extending or amending an economic development agreement between the city and Samet Corporation as they endeavor to construct a medical park on Grand Oaks Boulevard. So, the key item here is a request for extending a milestone by three years as part of this agreement. We'll point out that the overall project and rationale is to recover some construction costs for public road, water, and sewer infrastructure to serve a 22-acre property that Samet is developing, is at Medical Office Park. To date, there's been one building constructed with a tax-assessed value of a little over $12.3 million, and we feel like this project catalyzes taxable business personal property and really fits well with the future use of that part of town, there at Grand Oaks Boulevard, Huffman Mill Road, and Kirkpatrick Road, just across from Alamance Regional Medical Center. So, staff is recommending approval of this amendment, and happy to answer any questions they have.
Anyone have any questions at this point in time? This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for our city clerk.
Brian Hall, Samet Corporation, 309 Gallimore Dairy Road, Greensboro. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just here to say thank you. We appreciate the support. We're working hard to make things happen down there, and we appreciate your continued partnership and help as we do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side would like to speak on this item? Anyone on this side would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Public hearing has been closed. The motion is for the adoption of a resolution authorizing the amendment to the economic development grant. Is there any other questions? If not, we will entertain a motion. We have a motion, this is a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? So, the motion is passed to adopt the resolution authorizing an amendment to the economic development grant reimbursement agreement of August 22nd, 2022, between the City of Burlington and Grand Oaks Professional Park and Grand Oaks 1 LLC. Thank you. Item three, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request to rezone 780 Plantation Drive from the Light Industrial LI to the Conditional Industrial CI zoning district in accordance with the UDO Sections 3.17.1C, for the purpose of installing a major telecommunications tower to support emergency service center needs. The property is located on the north side of Plantation Drive, west of the intersection with Quarry Drive, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 122440. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson once again.
Good evening. This item was presented to you at a previous work session. Just seeing if the applicant is in the audience. In any event, this is a request to rezone property from light industrial to a conditional industrial. The purpose of the rezoning request is to install a telecommunications tower to support the 911 center. It is located on the north side of Plantation Drive. The TRC has approved the site plan, which shows the location of the tower previously. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this item at their August 25th meeting date, and staff is recommending the approval consistent with option number one in your consistency statement sheet. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions for Jamie on this particular item? If not, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for public comments on item three. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Got a motion, is there a second? Second. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion as spelled out on the blue sheet in your packet.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from Light Industrial to Conditional Industrial. The property is located on the north side of Plantation Drive, west of intersection of Quarry Drive, the parcel consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 122440. Motion is based upon the consistency of proposed rezoning of the comprehensive plan and that the future land use map in Section 4 of Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to be Business Park-Light Industrial. The request is compatible with the land use plan. Opposed rezoning supports the existing Alamance County Emergency Service Center. It also allows the ability of a telecommunications tower to occur subject to conditions stated on the site map. The action is reasonable in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for professional and business services, flex tenant facilities, and research and development businesses in that area. The request is compatible with existing use of the property and other non-residential zoning and land uses in the area. Any future development will be required to comply with the city's unified development orders.
Thank you. So, we have a motion for approval. Is there a second? We have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? That item is approved. Moving to item four. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request to rezone a 5.97 acre portion of a larger 22.178 acre tract from the Medium Industrial MI zoning district to the Medium Density Residential MDR zoning district. The property addressed as 4107 Charlie Engel Lane is located on the west side of Charlie Engel Lane, south of the I-40 rest stop, and adjacent to Guilford County Tax Identification Number 103254 to the west, and identified as Alamance County Parcel ID 106139. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson once again.
Okay, good evening again. So, as shown on the slide, I'm going to highlight over the portion of the parcel that the applicant is seeking rezoning. In total, the tract, which extends from Charlie Engel over to Guilford County line, is just over 22 acres. It's currently in the Medium Industrial zoning district. The portion of the property that is highlighted with the star is the area that the applicant is seeking the rezoning only, and they're seeking a rezoning to Medium Indu-, Medium Density Residential. This item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommended at their August 25th meeting date. Staff does recommend approval consistent with option number one. As you can see on this particular map, the property to the south that is labeled as MDR Z24011, and the property adjacent to that have been in front of you recently for rezoning and annexation. Those properties are within the city limits and are essentially, even though we don't have a development application, would essentially serve as a connection to serve this site. It is, this portion of the property that they're seeking the rezoning is, I would say, landlocked. There are constraints along the eastern portion of that property. Back Creek is located there, which presents some obstacles in terms of overall connection from the east. So, I believe the intent, and I think you'll hear from the applicant shortly, the intent would be to extend or amend the approved development to the south and then connect up to the north. Just highlighting some of the reasons why staff is recommending this rezoning. It is consistent with the land use designation for the area. This portion of the property, if not all, are not really suited for medium industrial zoning. They don't have great access. They're sandwiched in between residential areas and just may not, and due to the location and the irregular configuration, probably will never be developed for industrial-type uses. This would be a connection to the approved, previously approved 42 single-family detached lots, and rezoning this brings the property, or the portion of the property, more into compliance with our future land use designation and consistent with the zoning designation to the south. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant, I believe, also has a presentation that they would like to share.
Any questions before we hear from the applicant? Any questions for Jamie? We'll go ahead and open the floor for public comments. At this time, if the applicant would like to step forward. Please state your name and address for city clerk.
My name is Todd Lambert, 1141 J. Lane and Graham. I'm the project engineer for Ventara, and so Ventara is a local land development company that includes land development, infrastructure improvements, and the home building itself. So, we're kind of cradled to the grave in our projects. This portion of the property that Jamie had mentioned is the rear of the existing property and from Back Creek going west to its property. and from Back Creek going west to its property lines. And so it kind of makes sense for us as we kind of went through this development process, talking with you several months ago about the original rezoning to the south. Even though MDR density by calculations would yield about 75 units to the south, we knew we couldn't get that. We were hoping for about 50 units, and that's kind of what we presented to you before. Once we went through the process of actually laying out streets and getting a development plan, what you see now is actually the approved plan through TRC that yielded 42 lots. So in the meantime, as we were working through that plan that yielded 42 lots, we started having conversations with the adjoining property owner with his, what we'll call, landlocked piece of property to our north, because that piece of property is never going to be developed with his contiguous property, as again, same reason, we looked at, you're not going to cross Back Creek. You're certainly not going to cross Back Creek in that flood plain with a multimillion-dollar bridge to access less than six acres. So we started looking at both in conjunction with what we could do on our 15 acres and how we can incorporate this piece should it be rezoned. So we've had discussions with staff. We're ready to submit a plan with tomorrow's deadline to get on the TRC should this rezoning approved, and this kind of just shows you the plan that we intend to submit. And so this would, instead of having a cul-de-sac at the end of our existing property line, just extend that cul-de-sac north to access what would other be deadlocked piece of property. So this plan adding about six acres back to our original 15 gets us back to 50 lots exactly. So adding six acres gets us back to what we were hoping to achieve to begin with. At that acreage, 50 lots is going to be well below the allowed density of MDR. We'll actually be at 2.2 units per acre, so we'll actually still even be at half the allowed density, again, just because of the way you have flood plains, open space, and the irregular shaped lots. This still gets us back to what we were hoping to get originally. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We had about 10 people come out to that neighborhood meeting. Most of the questions at the neighborhood meeting were kind of some confusion about whether the whole piece was being rezoned or not, because they just get a notification, they see a sign go up, so they had questions about that. Most of them had no questions about the rezoning itself, once they realized it was not the whole Charlie Engel property and there was not a rezoning request for the balance of the property. The other questions we received were dealt with development timing. Several residents expressed some desire to connect to the water line that we will have to install down Engelwood to service our development, and they just had questions about the process in which they would have access to that water line. I laid out the best I could what that process was with the city and how they would go about requesting an annexation petition and connection to that line once it was in service. So I think all the other issues are the same that we talked about with the first rezoning. We can certainly go through questions if they need to, but this gets, this would allow us to get back to what we were originally hoped to for a lot count, and also still just kind of cleans up this area from a legacy industrial zoning that no longer fits for the surrounding development.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any questions, we'll invite you back up. Appreciate you going through that. Is there anyone else on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one addition, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion approved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any questions once again from counsel of Jamie and staff or the applicant? If not, we'll entertain a motion as spelled out on the pink sheet in your agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to amend 5.97 acre portion of the 22.178 acre tract from a medium industrial zoning district to the medium density residential zoning district. The property is addressed at 4107 Charlie Engel Lane and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106139. It is located on the west side of the Charlie Engel Lane, south of I-40 rest stop and adjacent to Guilford County Tax Number 103254 to the west. The motion is based upon the consistency of proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan and that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be rural residential agriculture. The current zoning of the property, MI, and neighboring parcels are inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The request moves the property more into compliance with the land use plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with zoning designation to the south and other residential zoning and land uses in the area. The proposed amendment supports infield residential development. Any future development will be required to comply with the city's unified development ordinance.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The item is approved. Thank you. Appreciate you all being here this evening. Item five, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex three parcels of land addressed to Zero Whiteskettle Road, 3333 Maple Avenue, and Zero Maple Avenue. Parcel ID numbers 130524, 130529, and 130530 into the City of Burlington and into the city's corporate limits. At this time, once again, we'll recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again.
Sure show tonight.
It's been busy.
It has.
This is a public hearing for an annexation that has been properly advertised and has been in front of you at your work session earlier back in September. And so the properties that are shown, highlighted in yellow with the red star, are the subject of a TRC preliminary plat approval for 29 single-family homes. The property is contiguous to the existing Burlington city limits. You'll see on the next slide that kind of highlights the southern part of the city. The darker tan are the, is the existing corporate limits, and that extends through Shamrock Drive. That makes this area contiguous to existing city limits. The request is for connection to utilities, and staff does recommend annexation to facilitate the future development of the property. Again, this just highlights where this area is in relationship to existing city limits, and the plan on the right is the actual TRC approved preliminary plat, which shows the layout of the residential development. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm not sure if the applicant, the applicant is here in the audience in case you have questions for him as well.
Just for clarification, the request is simply for voluntary annexation.
Yes, sir.
No consistency statement needed. Any questions for Jamie? Is the applicant here this evening? Okay. We'll go ahead and open the floor for public comments. Any comments?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on this side of the room like to speak? Then we'll hear from the applicant maybe if he wants to. Anyone on this side like to speak on this item? Seeing no speakers, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. If there's no other comments, if there's no questions for the applicant or city staff, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the ordinances presented.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance approving the annexation of Zero Whiteskettle Road, 333 Maple Avenue, and Zero Maple Avenue. Parcel IDs 130524, 130529, and 130530.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is approved. Thank you for being here this evening. Moving to item six, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a utility request and voluntary non-contiguous annexation of 109 West Old Glenco Road, a 9913 square-foot lot identified as parcel ID 140575. Again, we will hear from Jamie Lawson on item six.
Okay. If it's okay with you, I'd like to just do a presentation on the four items together.
So this would be items six, seven, eight, and nine?
Correct.
Okay.
However, you will need to act on them separately.
Sure. Understood. I think that would be great.
Okay. So again, this is an annexation request tied to the utility request, and this item, these items have been in front of you previously. Each of the properties which are highlighted here on this subdivision map, one, two, three, and four, each of these properties have residential, single-family development underway, and there are existing utilities in place under West Old Glenco Road. Because of their location, which is in the vicinity of this circle, black circle, staff has recommended that you consider annexation of these parcels. The reason why we're requesting that consideration is that these properties are located very close to existing city limits. To the west, you'll again see the darker beige color, which symbolizes Burlington's corporate limits. So Burlington's corporate limits actually extend where I'm circling across West Old Glenco Road and actually to Hall River. You'll also note that the city limits extend east across Highway 62, and then there are some satellite annexations further to the southeast. So utilities are in place. This is not out of the way for services to be provided, and you're actually at your next, or presented, I guess, at work session last night. You've heard about two others in this area too. So the applicant is in the audience in case you have any questions for him, but staff does recommend the annexation for each of these properties to be considered separately.
So staff's recommendation is for item six, seven, eight, and nine independently?
Yes.
Yeah. Any questions? Come ahead. Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for item six, 109 West Old Glenco Road. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no speakers, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed with no other questions for staff or the applicant. We would entertain a motion for the request.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request for annexation.
It's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is approved. Moving into number seven, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a utility request and voluntary non-contiguous annexation of 123 West Old Glenco Road, a 9121 square-foot lot identified as parcel ID 140575. This item was included in Jamie's previous explanation. Any questions for counsel from counsel before we open the floor? We'll open the floor for public comments at this time. Any public comments from anyone on this side of the room on this item? Any from anyone on this side? Seeing no speakers, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on item number seven.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the requested adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the utility request and adopt an ordinance approving the annexation of 123 West Old Glenco Road, PID 140575.
I have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven is approved. Item eight, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a utility request and voluntary non-contiguous annexation of 129 West Old Glenco Road, a 10,090 square-foot lot identified as parcel ID 140575. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments on this item. Anyone like to speak on this item? Anyone on this side like to speak on this item? Seeing no speakers, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the request of the adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the annexation of 129 West Old Glenco Road, PID 140575.
So we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is approved. Moving to item nine, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a utility request and voluntary non-contiguous annexation of 137 West Old Glenco Road, a 22,522 square-foot lot identified as parcel ID 140575. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on item nine. We'll do it there at this time. Is anybody on this side of the room like to speak? Anybody on this side like to speak on item nine? Seeing no speakers, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there one?
Motion approved.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the request.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the utility request and adopt the ordinance approving the annexation of 137 West Old Glenco Road, PID 140575.
We have a motion for approval and adoption of the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item nine is approved. Staff and Jamie, thank you so much for working through that, and thanks for everyone in the audience for helping us get through that as well. There's a lot of redundancy there.
There was no easy task, was it, Jamie?
With foot wooden for attorneys, we could have gone a lot quicker. Moving next into old business, item 10. City council will consider adopting a proposed Burlington City Park master plan. At this time, we'll recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Keller. Good evening.
Good evening, Mary Council. As directed during your work session on September 15th, we've got the City Park Master Plan before you for your approval. I'd like to recognize Graham Smith with Site Collaborative, the consultant that led this work for us, to briefly go over and reiterate the plan's scope and goals and how this plan was developed. And while he's coming forward, I also want to make sure you know that Katie's not over with. And while he's coming forward, I also want to make sure you know that Katie's not there with New Leaf Society. She's also in the audience representing the plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Graham.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Happy to be here again. A little closer this time. So yeah, wanted to kind of follow back up on what, last time it was a much lengthier presentation. As Rachel said, we just kind of wanted to walk through the value of the master plan and the process. And the idea that in reality, what we're trying to do is create a roadmap for twenty to thirty years. So it's a guidebook, it's a roadmap, it's a way to move forward, it's a way to kind of make decisions. But with that, there was a lot of identifying current and future challenges. What buildings, what sites, what constraints, what floodplain, what landfill issues? What does a site give us? What kind of opportunities are there? What challenges are there? And so with the challenges, then we kind of evaluate and consider a wide variety of opportunities. Everything's on the board, and then we kind of distill it down. But of course, everything's on the board. The stakeholders tell us, the city council, you guys offered some things up before we started our process and all of that. So we explore a lot of opportunities. We also, in the master plan, want to establish a clear vision and kind of a clear master plan goals to create a cohesive vision, so that we're not kind of moving forward enough. I'll revisit our goals that we stated. But we want to make sure there's a piece of vision as we move forward, so that you can have some things to stand by when you move forward with making decisions. You can say, hey, well, that fits the goals of the master plan. We can make a decision based on that. It does show what a park, the park would look like at a fifty-thousand-foot level. So it is a high level. It is not ten thousand, it's not five thousand, it's not finite design in that regard. It's a master plan for the full, you know, large, almost ninety acres. It does help communities often, not always, but it does often help prioritize funding opportunities. So in this situation, we were tasked with doing that. We helped come up with some funding variables and some options, or twenty-seven different ways you could slice some of the proposed options. So that's what we did. But that will help you guys make decisions moving forward and help you prioritize that. We also talked at length with the stakeholders, identifying linkages between any potential next step. So if one thing is considered to be moved, or one thing is considered to be taken out, what would have to happen in consideration for that? So these weren't done in a vacuum. No decisions were done with like, you know, were we talking about moving the maintenance facility offsite? What does that do? Okay, what other things does that need to happen for that to happen? What does that affect? What's the value of moving that item? So thinking about all those next steps. So that happened in the rooms with the stakeholders as we had those meetings. A master plan is also adaptable. So a park master plan is to be put on a shelf, but pulled back out every time you make some improvements to the plan. It's a guidebook, right? But it also could be amended. So the will of the community comes back and says, hey, we really think that this is a new park approach we should be taking. There's a new parks director, there's a new thought process about floodplain management in North Carolina. The master plan could be amended. It also does not preclude any community input for future significant moves. You know, if there's some large moves in the amusement area or things like that, or moving buildings around, it does not preclude at all. It doesn't say any statements about not engaging community activity in that manner. And as I, kind of, the last thing it doesn't do, it doesn't include finite design and details. So once again, it's at that fifty-thousand-foot level. So it's a master plan, looking at the big picture and some goals. The master plan goals that we identified, along with staff and the stakeholders, there's about fifteen people in the stakeholder group, some New Leaf Society members, three recreation and parks commissioners were there, and then key city staff leaders. And some of these came from you guys. Early on, you asked, before the master plan process was started, you asked about how could popular assets, the trains and amusement areas, be considered? How could they be expanded? How could what people think of a city park be expanded? But we wanted to create a sense of place, we wanted to be intentional, wanted to determine the best use of space. So that's a lot of the big moves, the decision-making that you go through in this kind of plan. We wanted to enhance connectivity. We know there's some connectivity challenges with pedestrian movement and vehicular movement into and out of and across the park, just daily interactions as well as special events. And then we had the opportunity to improve the ecological health. So the stakeholder group felt that was important with the creek running through the site. So that became one of the master plan goals as well. And in closing, the last slide, just wanted to kind of outline and revisit the idea, the process that we went through. We did receive raw and complete compiled data from the amusement area study. It was done in two thousand and nineteen. We received a whole lot of data from the citywide Recreation and Parks Master Plan. It was done in two thousand and twenty-three. So that was a system plan. It wasn't a specific site plan. So there's a lot of community input there, a lot of information that guided the stakeholder group and that was given to us by city staff that guided our kind of initial thoughts and processing. We did have the six meetings with the stakeholder group, once again, city staff, New Leaf Society, and the commissioners. They were mostly onsite. I think one of those was Zoom, but the rest of them were here onsite or at the Carousel House, Carousel Building. As the plan was refined, so typically, we do the site analysis and assessment, we do the planning, we get a lot of feedback from the stakeholder group, then we refine it. So you're kind of down to moving small pieces and parts, asking tough questions. Is this really the right move we want to make? Is this the thing we want to do? So we did go to the commission, Recreation and Parks Commission, early June, went to the New Leaf Society and had a board meeting in August, had it in open house, Carousel House on September eighth, and then visited you guys at work session September fifteenth, and then we're here again. So there's been a lot of just kind of tweaking the plan as we hear various feedback from those interactions with public entities. So that's it. I just wanted to kind of go through that process again and hit some of those high points.
What was the reaction from New Leaf Society?
It was very positive. There was a certain member there that you would know that said, go bigger or bolder. And I think that person was very supportive of the plan. But Katie May wants to fill in a little bit more of that. But I think it was, it was very positive. It was just, there was a certain member that said, why didn't you do a little more? But I think they came back with a letter that suggested they may support some efforts in the West Woods, as we called it, and some of the kind of initial steps is what they were thinking of in that area, so.
So this master plan from Burlington City Park sort of was birthed out of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Isn't that correct, Rachel?
Next step forward, yes.
Next step, logical step forward. And I know there was a public meeting at the, a public was invited to the Carousel when we had that event. Was this, I know the Parks and Rec Commission was a part of it, but did they get a full presentation at one of their meetings as well?
They did in June, June eleventh. They got a full.
Okay, perfect.
And there were, there are a couple of comments. There was just some conversation about the Overbrook Road, bridge and/or vehicular connections.
Pedestrian safety.
Yeah.
So, and obviously, this, as does virtually no plans, come with a funding mechanism out of the gate. So this is just a plan to sort of look and see how we can start the process. And kind of any low-hanging fruit and then future investments. I know there's a lot of talk about the ball fields, and that became a topic of discussion. Tony, I think you made it pretty clear, regardless of what we do, we'd have to add ball fields.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If we take away any of those four ball fields, we've got to replace it somewhere else. Because they're used all the time and, you know, we can't crowd them. What participation we have on other fields that we have, we've got to have additional fields if we take them away.
So, you know, we're talking about the potential of moving some fields and repurposing some fields, which as a matter of safety is probably a foregone conclusion anyway. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. The whole problem with the four ball fields on the old landfill, it's very unlevel because the trash was put in trenches in that time when that old landfill was done. That was the way it was done. So the trash and garbage is decomposing into trenches, but you've got good dirt on both sides of the trenches. So you get a, you get washboard, you know, going across. So the fields are very unlevel, and when you're chasing a ball, looking at a fly ball or something, you know, you step in one of those holes, you can be injured pretty easy.
So, you know, the only comment that I've received as feedback is, hey, we're going to build the ball fields. I think that was pretty clear. We got to have ball fields.
Yes, sir.
But those are going to be repurposed for safety reasons and because of a master plan improvement to the park.
There's no way to do anything to that landfill other than just add dirt to it. And we've done that over and over and over, and it just, you know, it never solves the problem. It just keeps it going a while.
So I think that's an important piece because that's, those ball fields have been here for a long, long time, and they were, they're a fabric of our history. And I think that needs to be really communicated clearly to the public, that we're going to, we still have a vibrant program and a need for those fields. They're just going to be done somewhere else.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from council or any questions?
I think one thing Mayor that mentioned, you know, and he mentioned it, as we get into it, obviously, this can be amended, you know, we get things sort of feel our way.
Sure.
And so, which, I just wanted to add to what you've said, is that we need to make that clear, that this is not set in stone type thing. It's a good go-by, but, you know, down the road, we need to amend, obviously. The wills of the community can direct the council, and the folks are doing it what they want as we develop, you know, the plan, so.
Well, if you look at the property in general, even though it's not part of City Park as a parcel, the YMCA alone has got a change in their future. So that's going to mean that it has to be adaptable, and it will have to be amended. Because regardless, they've sent us a letter of interest requesting it be included in our conversations about sports parks. So I think it's, again, a foregone conclusion that they're going to be relocating or some significant renovations at that site, and they're trying to figure that out. So I think the key is this is a twenty, thirty-year plan with no funding mechanism to it that is adaptable and can be amended, so thank you.
Pretty important issue there.
And there's things to be done on the west side of the park in terms of the West Woods, as we mentioned earlier.
Yes.
That's, that topo and that ground work there is nothing like it is on the southeast side where the athletic fields are.
That's true.
The field and bottom hill there has got a pretty good subbase. So that's, that part is on this side of Overbrook Road certainly has better roots to it in terms of development. Those ball fields with two, three, and four, and even, especially two, three, and four, that's a challenge.
Two is probably the best of the rest of them over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that three and four stuff. And as you indicated over the years, that should fill in because quite frankly, balls hit, lurches and come up, and we see people get hurt, balls thrown in the face. Frankly, there's been some injuries just chasing balls out there. Fields have to get that way to be approached. But, you know, City Park is still in the middle of town.
Yes, that's the main part that is right here.
You cannot, not many cities can say that. You know, we feel like we're a little smaller pull-and-park kind of concept if you think about law and very simple. Carousel is a special type facility. The renovation's there, it's just great. Train is still always a popular item. There's a family gathering near you. It's what I used to call Switzerland, you know, it's in the middle of town. It's not east-west, north-south. People gather there, all of the city, but quite frankly, we're getting a lot of people across the state. So its location is really good. We were able to develop the property, as you probably purchased, on the other side of where the tennis center is now, the pickleball complex, the double center. That's in place, and it's pretty much full now, to be quite honest, in terms of development there. But so those ball fields are going to be key in terms of how they can be utilized to complete that process.
And I will just comment, I probably didn't put it in writing, but it, hopefully, this is also just a guidebook and/or roadmap for staff, just to every day, think about, you know, we heard a lot about the passion around City Park on staff. And so it's just, just understanding that there are some goals and a vision for the future. And it doesn't, they don't need to be big capital improvements. They are, what's the landscape approach to West Woods? How am I thinking about spending maintenance dollars this year versus next year? Can I put two things together and think about a little bit of improvement? But it's just, it's just, there's little things, but everything hopefully has some intention to it with some framing on it now. So it's not just this, 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 and this. It's got, it's got kind of a direction to it, so.
It's been an interesting process, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. And we appreciate the opportunity to spend this time working with you guys on it, so.
Any other questions for staff on this side?
Yes. I was asked about the dog park. Rachel, forgive me, I was supposed to actually email you because someone's actually in the audience who asked, now, is the dog park being relocated in the plan?
In the plan, it is proposed, yes, to be relocated from the area where the old pool was, where it is currently. And it's being considered to move over towards the softball Hall of Fame side of town, south side of the park. There's a, there's a large parking lot over there. The plan currently shows it in the existing amphitheater area. Currently, we definitely did hear some feedback at the open house about access. We liked it from a shade perspective. We liked it from the idea that there could be a big dog, and you could actually do a small dog area next to the parking lot. There's some, there's also some other areas we haven't identified on the plan because it's at this level, not this level. But the thought process was to move it over into the shade and then use the flat area that where the dog park is now for some future development opportunities. Some parking, a teen center, an admin building. That is a very developable piece of property.
For visual, too.
For future, yeah, versus when you do dog parks, a lot of times you do have a little bit of slope to them. You have a little bunch of trees to them. You have some shade to them. But we did hear about some concerns about accessibility.
Mm-hmm.
And distance from the parking, but there is a parking area there now. We just would, whoever picks up the idea, whoever picks up that more final design could work out, there could be land surveys done and evaluation on AD accessibility and some things like that. Good thing is, there's also a restroom over there, though. There is a building over there. There's an indoor shelter over there on that side. So there's some wins for moving it over to that side. Not saying it's without, not without challenges, so.
Thank you.
You feel like the plan has been communicated across the entire city?
Yeah. Perhaps someone else does it, I don't know where that came from. So, yeah, I feel like we've done, we've gotten a lot of input from a lot of different. The stakeholder group we typically do a master plan with is three or four people within a city. So the city this time dialed up fifteen different people.
Recreation.
Three parks, Recreation Parks Commissioners, New Leaf Representation, and at least ten staff members. So that wasn't, while that wasn't community outbound, we received a lot of data from two thousand and nineteen, twenty, twenty-three inbound. And then we had a very large working group. That was almost too large of a working group that we typically work with. And then we went to these various, I feel like we got some really good input every time we went to the groups. And we didn't, I didn't feel like we got a lot of pushback. We got a lot of like, hey, what about pedestrian connections here? What about cross, safety crossings here? So very good, finite, detailed conversations. I didn't hear globally that there were challenges with the communication strategy, so.
I think I'll add regarding the open house. I'll add that with regard to the open house, we worked with Morgan's staff in Recreation and Parks to Interferent Strange to get that information out. Via media advisory press release, we sent information to the Arboretum Advisory Board, Rec and Parks Commission, New Leaf Society, Downtown Merchants, in addition to social media posts and events website. So I would say at least all of our typical channels, if not a little bit more, because the open house paired this plan with the Arboretum Plan and the Downtown Pocket Park as a method of kind of cross-pollinating interest. Somebody that might have been particularly interested in downtown could also discover more about the City Park Plan while they were there. So I do feel confident that Morgan's staff sent those things out through the channels that people have subscribed to obtain information or are used to seeing. So at least for the open house, I do think that was communicated well.
Good. Thank you.
It's a thirty-year plan. I think it's just a lot of information. Like, it's a lot to digest because you're talking about thirty years. Information is readily available, but just from what I'm hearing is the ball parks, the dog park, and just not having a chance to digest. Information is readily available, but just from what I'm hearing, is the ball parks, the dog park, and just not having a chance to digest it all yet.
Well, you got thirty years.
You're one of the only one that left after thirty years, that's right.
Any other questions, comments from Council? Thank you, thank you, Rachel. If not, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the City Park Master Plan.
Salute.
We have a motion to adopt as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is official now, so. That'll be like a lot of other plans. Where's it go? Next this evening is public comments, at this time, we'll call on any public comments for topics not on the agenda. Each speaker is requested to limit their comments to five minutes, and we have, with the timer. First speaker this evening is Bishop Greg Argrave with Apple Ridge Development Update. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Council, it's good to be here again. Four twenty-one Fulton Street is where the church location is. And I'm pleased to announce on Apple Ridge Development that paving took place today. That street is paved, we'll get the final inspections, whether I do the testing of the water and sewer, all those things. And then we'll be ready to build twelve houses. I think that this has been a model of how nonprofits can come together with the city. I looked at the inspection box today, and this process started October twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one. It's been almost four years, but I believe that you put in the work and we collaborate together, this is what can happen. We're going to have ribbon cutting sometime soon, I'd like to make sure that you are there, those of you who can make that, because you're going to get to see exactly how these dollars have been used. And you also get to see some of the future ten additional houses that's going to be built, as well as some apartments that's going to be built as well. We're just very excited about this. I've gotten to know the staff on a first-name basis, and the inspectors know me when they see me coming. But it's been a great project, and I want to personally thank you all again for entrusting us as well. And you've injected funds into this project, we have injected funds. I still have people who have connected with us who say, hey, this is a great project, and we want to do all that we can do. So thank you, look out for the ribbon cutting so that you can be there to see again firsthand. Thank you again, that's one of the greatest updates I have.
How many units will you have after these are built then, once you previously did?
We had, we have twenty units that are actually twenty-two years old.
So that'd be twenty-nine.
And then you'll have ten more units for fifty-five and older, but then we'll have twenty-two more single-family homes. We built six single-family homes in the pandemic, right in the heart of the pandemic. And I know it don't look like it, but I've been pastoring here in Burlington for forty, forty years, so that's how long I've been at that one place. Thank you so much, and thank you all for partnering with us, and we'll be coming back, because there'll be other things that we'll be doing, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Sawyer Jones, topic is Williams. Good evening, please state your address for our city clerk.
Is it okay if I just state, I'm a resident of Burlington?
Is that fine? Just to say resident of Burlington?
Yeah, I'm just a minor, so I'd rather not.
I got you.
Thank you. Good evening, Burlington City Council members, my name is Sawyer Jones, and I'm a student body president at Williams High School for the class of two thousand twenty-six and a resident of the city of Burlington. I'm here tonight to speak on one of my key initiatives as student body president, which is helping our students understand their responsibility for civic engagement. We need to move beyond simply learning about democracy, but we need to practice it. As a proud international baccalaureate or IB World School, Williams is dedicated to cultivating the IB core value of principal action, encouraging students to move beyond the classroom and engage thoughtfully in civic life to make a positive lasting impact. That's why our IB program students are hosting a citywide debate for municipal candidates at Williams as part of their CAS project. They are organizing a serious thoughtful event focused on key community issues. This is the perfect opportunity for our students to realize their powerful stake in Burlington's future, and for voters to understand who their choices are. With that being said, I have the honor tonight to personally extend a formal enthusiastic invitation on behalf of the entire Williams student body to Councilmember Ronnie Wall to join us in helping educate our students and community. Councilmember Wall, your participation, your, excuse me, your participation will not only elevate the discussion, but will serve as a wonderful lesson for our students about the importance of accessible and open leadership. I would also like to thank Councilmember Harold Owen for confirming he will be present, and our, our students are very excited to meet a public official. We sincerely hope to hear from you very, very soon, as the day is coming up, and we hope to hear that you'll confirm to be there. As a reminder, the debate will be held on October fourteenth at six P M. at Williams High School Auditorium. Thank you for your time.
I'm looking forward to hearing the public officials, maybe I'll just come say a few words as well. Thank you, we appreciate those comments. That is all we have for public comments this evening. Moving into Council comments, I do want to remind everyone of a few upcoming events. October seventeenth, there will be a ribbon cutting celebration for the ADA train at Burlington City Park. That is October seventeenth at four P M. October seventeenth, B-Town Special Events will host Downtown Monster Mash with trick-or-treating at some of the downtown businesses and family events at the Historic Depot from five to seven. I'd like to extend a personal invitation to Williams to come out and attend that. Our next city council meeting is October twenty-first. And I do want to congratulate, last night at the work session, we announced the selection of Bob Patterson as our next city manager effective October thirty-first. I do want to give Bob a round of applause. And while we're on the congratulations, I know we had a pickleball tournament. And I know, I heard that we were expecting sixty or so, and how many we had?
Sixty-eight.
I heard we had a hundred and eighty.
Hundred sixty-eight.
Hundred sixty-eight. That, that is absolutely amazing. And we talked about something last night at a council meeting, and I'm going to ask staff for clarification. We talked about some of the minimum housing issues that we're dealing with and how we're going to move forward with holding the property owners accountable and potential demolition. I know we have two that are going to be coming before us.
On the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth, and that would be.
This month.
Ireland and Avon.
Yes, sir.
So, and we're going to proceed with those, and there was a lot of public input and that, and I just want to be sure that everybody was aware of that particular items. Any other comments from city council at this time?
Craig, whatever happened to that with discussion that we had about the fines and collecting the fines and all that?
The software is now in, we actually have a meeting next week to start the process and, and especially about parking and those type issues. So, so it is in the works.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other Council comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's move through, second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.